At the last ward meeting, I had done a PowerPoint. Did anybody see it? I know a few of, well, probably like five of you in here did. But we've updated it, so we're going to look at the city update on the projects. We are, June 8th is an election day, right? And we've got, I started on the council in 2016. Councilman La Cour, Councilman Morgan, and Councilman Moran started in 2017. And two more meetings, we will no longer have Councilman La Cour nor Councilwoman Morgan. So tonight is to show what we have accomplished in four years, where we're headed, where we're at, and where we're moving forward. And we're honored to have Chuck, Councilman Clark, joined us in November. And Councilman Finley just joined us. So next year, we'll do another update where we are. So we're going to start out and let you know where we are. The city is hot and we are, we are on fire. We got a lot going on. And I'm going to move over here. It doesn't matter if y'all see me as long as you hear me. Is that okay? Because it's, it's kind of lengthy. Street paving. We have been working very hard with street paving. In 2018, we had an engineer do a road survey on all the streets. And they did a Pacer rating, one to 10, one being the worst, 10 being the best. All the streets in Diamond Head. Eighty-one point five, five miles of streets. Four point six, five miles, six, seven miles were rated in the bottom four ratings, which were fair, poor, very poor and failed. Over 51 miles of the 81 total miles were graded in the top ratings. Excellent, very good, and good. The city will have paved 14.5 miles of the lowest ratings, rating streets, including the FY 21. And here's how the projects went. Our Phase 1, which is complete, we did 7.5 miles. Huey Stockstill was a contractor. Completed cost was about $906,000. Phase 2, which is complete, Warren Paving was a contractor. 3.5 miles, total cost $457,000. Phase 3, which is on the agenda tonight to accept the low bid for Warren Paving, is another 3.5 miles. Total cost $440,000. Bringing us to Phase 4, which we're working on for our FY 22 budget. And we are anticipating using $500,000 for FY 22. So we're over 14.5 miles in paving and the brief time that we've started our five-year maintenance plan. Over here on the left, you'll see how the streets were rated. You'll see the colors, what they mean. The red being the worst, the magenta being the best. Over here, you'll see everything that's in black has already been completed. Or Phase 3 streets are on there as well. So this is where we are today, 14.5 miles. We're moving right along with the streets. Phase 3, this is the one that we're working on now. So if your street's one of these ones that are in red, these are the ones that are on the agenda tonight to accept the low bid, and work should begin in 60 days. Diamond Head Medical Center. This is a private invested, investment of over 4.6 million, 20,000 square foot medical facility with a pharmacy, 55 to 65 full-time and part-time jobs. The proposed facility will include a state-of-the-art medical facility, will provide citizens with a cancer care area, a new CT scanning lab with diagnostic imaging, x-ray imaging, specialty pharmacy, and over 20 exam rooms. The newly proposed development aims to accommodate the needs of the aging population while also increasing economic opportunities for the surrounding areas. This one development has already sparked interest with other developers wanting to come into that area with medical facilities. Here you'll see the front view, the front elevation of it. Over here is the site plan, whoops. Over here is the site plan. And we can see that under construction when we're going over to Rouse's. And here is the floor plan. Which you can see, for the first time, north of I-10 in Hancock County, we're finally going to have an infusion center, which will allow for various treatments. And also, it will allow for cancer treatments. So patients no longer living north of I-10 or in Hancock County will have to travel to Memorial Hospital. They will be treated here, along with numerous other specialties coming to Diamond Head. Drainage projects. We have a list of these, so let me get a sip of water because I may not make it. We received this year from our legislators, $500,000 in Go Mesa funding. The city and the Hancock County Board of Supervisors jointly, together, have pledged $4 million, $2 million each, to go out and look to secure funding. We currently have engaged Pickering Engineering to seek funding and leverage the $4 million we have into $20 million. So we're very excited to be moving, seeking funding, looking for resources to do all the projects that we wish to do. Projects that we're currently working on, Hilo Street Drainage Improvements, Makiki Street Drainage Improvements, Turnberry Drainage Improvements, Milton Ditch Channel Stabilization, and that is on the agenda tonight to accept the low bid. The Lily Pond and the Miller Pond Restoration, we're in the permitting on that one. Coon Branch Cooler Street Alamoona Drainage Improvements. Dredging of Paradise Bayou Canals, cutoff bayou area. So we're working on getting the hydrographic survey done so that we can move forward with the dredging of our canals, which has not been done in many, many years. Colas Court and Iona Street Ditches, you just heard Mr. Kirschenbaum with the water sewer discussing that. Those two are on the agenda tonight. Plenty of drainage projects going on in the city. This is a list of the projects that we have as priority in seeking the 20 million funding. This is from the Wagner Report. Some of these we are currently working on. Disaster Management Firm. As you all know, we hired Ross and Disaster Management Firm to come in, assist the city with hurricane support FEMA MEMA assistance. They're working on debris pickup and debris monitoring reimbursement in the amount of 2.2 million. They're working on reimbursement for cat B emergency work, cleanup and protective measures in the amount of $6,000. We applied for HMGP grant funding at the last meeting for warning sirens to be installed in the city and portable generators with lights to be utilized in the event of a hurricane. On the agenda tonight, we're advertising for debris monitoring and debris removal contractors. Having those two in place and mobilized will allow the city of Diamond Head to have debris monitoring contractor and debris monitoring firm here in Diamond Head hours after a storm. No longer will we have to wait. They will be mobilized, they'll be waiting outside the city and ready to go. Two appeals that we're working on from the commercial area is the pickup of the debris from the commercial area in the amount of $70,000. And we're also working on street damage that we were denied on an appeal between $3,000 and $30,000. Legislative update. This was the biggest year for the city of Diamond Head legislative funding. We had a great year. We need to thank our Senator, Senator Moran, and our representative, Mr. J. McKnight, as well as Representative Bren Anderson that serves here in Hancock County, and all the coast legislator that worked together to get this funding for the city of Diamond Head. Noma Drive Waterfront, we received this year $400,000. With the $400,000 we received last year, a total of $800,000. GCRF, which is the Gulf Coast Restore Funding, we received last year $2 million, I mean, 2021 this year, $2 million, last year $1.5. So we're at 3.5 million to start on the town center. And we received $500,000 for the Go Mesa funding, which will be for the area over by Alamoona and Coon Branch. Projects that we're working on, and we've got plenty of slides to show you what they look like, is East Aloha Improvements, the Noma Drive Boat Launch, the Commercial Town Center, the Diamond Head Dog Park, City Hall Parking Lot Improvements, Machoy Creek Kayak Launch, and the Exit 16 Improvements. Here is a rendering of the proposed layout for the commercial area, East Aloha. We're going to add paths on either side of the roadway, decorative lighting, decorative streetlights, enhancing the whole existing commercial area. We're going to reach out and try to do developments on either side of the existing driveway or new roadway and allow for expansion of commercial businesses in that area. Our town center, which we're very excited about, this is the master plan and it's showing the mixed-use concepts. So ideally, we want to have restaurants below and townhomes above, commercial developments, parks, all in one mixed-use area, bringing us a downtown that will marry up with the existing downtown with a roundabout joining the two. The 3 million that we have been funded with the Restore Funding, and it's actually 3.5, is going to be for the first 3,400 lineal feet of roadway. So the funding that we're using this for will be to, you see the blue line right here? All that you see in blue is the first roadwork that we will do. This will connect Noma Drive to Park 10 and also start with the first loop of roadways that we need. This will also extend Leisure Time by Dr. Kellam's Office over to Park 10, creating and opening up a new area for development and growth opportunity for the city of Diamond Our Noma Drive Boat Launch, this is our waterfront development. We have $800,000 currently obligated to it. This will be a boat launch. This will be a kayak launch. It will have parking, it will have restrooms, it will have a broad, broad walk that will walk, be a walkway from the boat launch all the way around. And let me focus in on it. It'll start here, continue all the way around, under I-10, to allow access to the other side and a pathway along the waterway. City Hall Improvements, we've been talking about this for, I think I did a proposal here in 14, so that's a lot of years. This is finally being realized. This is something that we need, and when you go out this afternoon after the rain, you'll greatly appreciate why we need this. This is on the agenda tonight to advertise, so we are ready to move forward. The day has finally come. This will move all the parking that's currently out, way out, way out past the green area up close to City Hall. This will allow for handicap, handicap access into City Hall along the concrete area. This will move our recycle dumpster and our new cordboard dumpster to the back of City Hall, so it's not visible to the front. It'll have its own pad and its own parking. We will remove all the existing beat-up asphalt in this area, put down new sod, plant trees, enhance the walking trail, and make a big, real town green for the residents of Diamond Tonight, you saw the presentation on our City Hall improvements, and this is something that is much needed. If you come here to get a permit, or if you're a developer coming in to meet, it's just not conducive at the moment. We're going to have a counter where residents can come in. They can get their permits, meet with the building officials, have it where, if they're just coming in to pull an inspection, there's no need to walk through City Hall. You can go right to the counter, get your electrical inspection or plumbing or what have you. Very conducive to what we need. And, and did you all, let me show you the floor plan. And the floor plan does have conference room, big waiting area, and utilizing the existing handicap restrooms that we've already restored. Machoy Creek Nature Trail Kayak Launch. This is Tidlins funded as well. We did submit our permit, and we are going to resubmit and modify the permit to add in restoration of the, of the Machoy Creek. So currently, we did not have the restoration of the creek. And after discussion, we realized it needed to be on there, so we're redoing it, adding the restoration of the creek in, installing sediment bases, basins, so that we can keep the creek maintained. We've already restored rotten bayou in that area, so we want to make sure that the silt does not meander back out. This will have a new kayak launch, a parking lot, and an area for residents on the other side, a grass walkway all the way to this point. Then at that point, it will be a pier walking out, so that the public will have access to rotten bayou. And also, this will be, for those of us that can't make the nine miles on the kayak launch, on the kayak ride, this will be midpoint on the nine miles. The Dog Park, I think we've all seen it and heard it, and it's finally coming to life. So the Dog Park will be on the other side where the temporary park is. It will have a fishing pier, it'll have an entry building that's shaped like a doghouse. There will be splash pads for the dogs, sand pits, culverts, play areas, and plenty of parking in the front. It will also have a path that will connect to East Rec, I mean Twin Lakes, so that you can walk from Twin Lakes over to the Dog Park, walk through the woods, come back out, and go back to Twin Lakes. We had the Dog Park Day Sunday, so I wanted to let you all know what the new logo looks like and to congratulate Josie Glass. This is Diamond Head's official Dog Park logo. We had 27 contestants, got down to five. The residents of Diamond Head voted, and this is what you all selected, which is a beautiful logo. Dog Park Day, we had many winners. This is just a few of the photos of the winners that we had. It was a great day by many in Diamond Head. Dog Park Steering Committee. If you see this group of residents, and I know y'all know most of them, they have been here every Thursday since December working on the Dog Park. They have worked very hard to get us where we are and finally to make this dream come to life. Without them, it wouldn't have been, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the, in the current state that it's in now, which is ready for construction plans and ready to advertise. Exit 16 Improvements, we've been waiting a long time. I remember doing the PowerPoint that was brought to MDOT with Mayor Schaefer, and I want to say it was 13 or 14 we went, went to meet with Mr. King. Where we are now is, MDOT is working on the acquisitions of the properties, the properties that they will need to do the roundabouts. From there, they will work on the relocation of the utilities, followed by the construction. We are hoping the spring of 2022, or shortly thereafter, we see some activity moving in that area. Envision Diamond Head 2040. This has been going on for a year, and I think most of you have seen it, the public meetings that we've had. Orion Planning has done an outstanding job. We finally have our draft plan in place. You can go to envisiondiamondhead2040.com, click on that, review the draft plan. And if you see any comments or anything that you want changed, go on there, make your comments, let them, let us know what needs to be changed. It's open for 30 days. Do we have the cutoff day, Mike? So the end of the month will be the end of being able to make your comments. So short of going on Facebook and posting them where they're not going to be in the comment section, you might want to go to the website and put your comments in, and that way, they will be addressed. FY 22, 22 budget is beginning. If you're on my email list, you have the schedule. We're going to have several public meetings, getting, getting your input, going over the budget, get involved, learn what's going on, learn the budget, and attend the meetings. Steering Committees. We had the Farmers Market was our first steering committee, that was a huge success, Dog Park as well. We're moving on to the Diamond Head Skate Park and Pump Track. Those meetings will be starting soon. Diamond Head Main Street will be starting soon. And on the agenda tonight for approval is Diamond Head Senior Center, to get a group of residents together to look at activities for seniors and resources. That's going to be a fun event, and that is one that we've had many requests for. American Cares Act, the city received 1.8 million in federal funding, and our comptroller, Ms. Catherine Conkle, gave us an update on that. As we know, Lieutenant Governor came to Diamond Head to the country club, discussed the $5.9 billion water sewer broadband tourism and economic issues. This is a very large amount, and this does not come often to the state of Mississippi, so it needs to be utilized wisely. We need to do planning. We need to work hard collectively to make sure that our city gets what we need and has everything that we need. There's no reason why we shouldn't. If you fall short on this one, then you're just not doing your work on what we need moving forward. Our financial, and there's been questions lately on, okay, what is the stability of the city? The city is very, very solvent. As you can see, looking back 13 all the way to 2020, we've had steady, steady, steady uphill of, of funding. We are very solvent with millions of money in the bank, as you can clearly see. Moving forward, securing grants, every agenda you'll see grants on there. We try to leverage the funding that we get, and we reduce millage. We work very, very hard at securing grants, short of going out and borrowing or spending cash available. Grants, speaking of grants, so the grants that we have gotten, and this is starting in 2014, moving to current, date-to-date, and these are lists of all the grants that we have gotten, and I'm not going to read them all. Total amount of grants received by the city of Diamond Head since 2014 is $12,813,908.90. That is a lot of grant writing and a lot of requesting for funds. Out of that, the city was responsible for 2.8 million. So that's 10 million. We're doing exceptional, and we only plan to, to work harder and get more grant funding for all of you. Current grants that we have out pending is a little shy of $500,000 with the city's part at $46,000. Consolidation, consolidation of public services into the city operation, Diamond Head Fire Department, Diamond Head Water Sewer. The city has put a link on their website, so go to the city's website. Any questions that you've called into City Hall have been answered on that website. If there's one that isn't there, then maybe you need to call in and ask that. But pretty much everything that you've asked is on that website. Also, you know, numerous, well, you see the list here. This is how many times it's been studied on savings on consolidation. It goes over and over and over. The reports are there, the links are there. Go look at them, read them, you know, look at, look what's in there and look at the cost So we have a few people that, and at the last meeting, they discussed it, the referendum. Some residents wasn't sure that it was two referendums, they thought it was one. Over to the left is how, right here is how the ballot will look. This is a sample ballot, how it will look when you go to vote. Question number one would be, do you favor the consolidation of the Diamond Head Water and Sewer District into the city government by combining the operations of the Diamond Head Water Sewer District to become part, become a department within the city of Diamond Head and thereby eliminating the need for separate water and sewer district within the city of Diamond Head? The next question will be, do you favor the consolidation of the Diamond Head Fire Department into the city government by combining the operations of the Diamond Head Fire Department to become a department within the city of Diamond Head and thereby eliminating the need for a fire district in the city of Diamond Head? They're two separate non-binding referendums. They are non-binding. This is just to get you, your opinion. After discussing it for nearly 10 years, this is to get your opinion. Some of the questions were, how much savings is expected of consolidation with the Diamond Head Water Sewer District? You can go on the city's website and see it. It was roughly $300,000 annually, and this was just using the financials. So this was using the 2019 financials, and this is per year. Because 2020 audits are not due, they're not in, and we're still in FY 21. How much savings on the fire department? If your property value is $100,000, your fee for the fire department will go down to $25 a year instead of 300. If your home is assessed at $200,000, you will save $175 a year on the fire department fees. Even though the fire department, you know, if it, if you all want us to look at consolidation and comes in and we have to raise two mills, you will be saving money with the fire department under the city as well as the sewer. Some of the items that were asked was, where do you get the savings? We have four governing entities in, in the city of Diamond Head. We have four attorneys, we have four comptrollers, we have four general managers, we have four of everything in Diamond Head. We have lobbyists, a few of us have lobbyists, commissioners per diem, insurance equipment. We run several websites in the city. A one-stop shop for residents and developers, where the new residents that come to Diamond Head have one place to stop. Right now, if you're new to Diamond Head, it is overwhelming. So if we had one stop where residents could all come to one place and get the information they need, it probably would be easier. Developers currently, when they, when they get a set of design drawings, which you pay dearly for an engineering and an architect to do the plans, they have to bring the city a set. At that point, we have to tell them they have to go bring the water sewer a set, and they have to bring the fire department a set. When usually under a city, you bring in the sets, they go to the building department, and it's dispersed out because all of that is in-house. So we're paying engineers to review at the water sewer as well as at the city, the same set of plans. Vacation of easements would make it a lot easier to have it within. Master plans to have the water sewer overlaid with the drainage, just like that prime example we saw. You know, it's difficult, and it's not that nobody's doing their job, so please understand it's not that nobody's doing their job. We have excellent water in Diamond Head, we do. I worked there for three years. So that isn't the issue. We have, we have, you know, good drainage, but it's difficult when you have people that aren't working on the same thing at the same time. Now, we've got a manhole hanging that's sitting on a ditch, and it's, who's, who's, whose issue is it? Is it the water sewer because it's their manhole? Is it the city because it's our ditch? You know, collectively, it's difficult to handle these decisions and discussions. Street repairs, if a water main breaks or a sewer main breaks, and it's going to happen. That is nobody's fault if that happens. This happens, it's part of the beast. You have to dig the road up, you have to do the repairs. At that point, you know, who's, who's going to put the asphalt down? Who's going to pay for it? Who's going to make sure the limestone's on there so that the residents don't hurt their cars or move over them? Public records request. The city has openly shared public records with any governmental entity asking, but the city does have to pay for public records request if we get them from the water sewer district. So this would reduce those costs. Debts and budgets being worked on without any communication with the governing body. So this, out of everything, even if you look past what we're going to save, this is like four people in your house that don't talk to one another, and they're all getting their budgets and doing what they want to do without talking to the other person. And eventually, you have to pay for it. You all have to pay for it. So if we don't know, which we did, and we read in the newspaper about the bond, you know, we, we, if we were discussing getting the $20 million bond for the drainage, would that be conducive to the residents of Diamond Head for us to pursue that $20 million bond, knowing the water sewer was going to... knowing the water sewer was going to issue another $12.5 million bond? That would put so much strain on the residents of Diamond Head that I don't know if we could overcome it. So being able to have budgets and debts discussed collectively as one unit would be very, 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 very conducive. Health insurance and PERS. Health insurance at the city, the employees pay part of their health insurance. And it's totally different, the fire department, do we know offhand? No. And I know the water sewer, when I was there, they paid employees family coverage. These are things we can't do. So these are things that would be, you know, cons to the city taking over the water sewer district. So that would be a con. PERS, we've seen many, many, many discussions about the firemen and the PERS. You know, them wanting to be in the PERS. We've had discussions, you know, about what we could do for that. We are unable to get an opinion from PERS on whether or not we can just have the fire department on PERS and nobody else with the city. But it's something we're actively looking at. We are considering doing, you know, making a motion that if we can't get PERS, then we won't pursue taking over the fire department. That that is something that they want, and that's something that we need to look in and try hard to get. Unity with employees and residents not feeling overwhelmed with several levels of governing bodies. I think a lot, a lot of stress that residents feel because they pay so many governing bodies, different things. They feel overwhelmed, and they feel like they're paying a lot more than maybe they should be paying because it's just separate entities, and it is confusing. Unity with employees, having Public Works know where the water wells are located, where the lift stations are, where a manhole is and a ditch where we need to be watching the drainage more. To know different, to be able to have the knowledge of the drainage and the water sewer for both the water sewer employees as well as the Public Works Department would be very, very beneficial so that they could work together jointly on solving the current issues. And this last slide, I have blank because it's a homework slide. I'm going to give you all because it is partly your responsibility to research. You need to do your own research, you need to look, you need to see what's going on. I don't know if anybody in here has ever gone and taken the four budgets, the POA, the Diamond Head Water Sewer District, the fire district in the city of Diamond Head. Collectively, it added up the four budgets. And that's your homework. Go look, it's on everybody's website, they're all there. We do an outstanding job in the city of Diamond Head, being transparent, all governing bodies do. Go pull those budgets, add them up, then look at, and make sure you do the same year. If you're going to do '19, pick everybody's budgets for '19, '20, whatever you want to do, '21. Then look at neighboring cities and their budgets. And that's your homework assignment, and let me know what you find out. And that concludes our presentation and update of the projects. Thank you all for listening.